Rise and join me in the pledge allegiance of our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
I love freedom.
Yes. Thank you for coming to this meeting this evening. If you'll take notice, the exits are in the rear and behind me here as well. Thank you. All right. So the first item on the agenda is to review minutes for October, November, July, and August. Has the board had a chance to review those minutes?
I don't think I was here in July. I was here in August, September, but not October.
Oh, I'll make a motion to pass the minutes.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, for those that I just appear for.
Okay. So Dan, would you like me to move forward with the first item on the agenda here?
Ah, yeah.
Okay. Semco Development Corp. Yeah? Hey Mike? How are you?
Good. So Semco seems to be a project that's been kind of popping up on agendas for the last couple of months consistently. Where it stands at this particular time, there was the overheads on the wetland maps indicated a wetland on the property. And Dan, if I'm going straight here, let me know, but we had a wetland biologist out there and made a determination that based upon what he saw, that particular wetland was not there. That being said, there is a, so it wouldn't be regulated by the Army Court, no D E C. There is a Levine drainage path that does exist there, and we don't believe that there's going to be any specific regulatory action that's either by its court, but you guys do have the provision within the code that does at least, you know, identify it so it's clearly on the map. And that's the latest item that popped up, so we have to get that located out there. Surveyor's aware of it, but it's got to be done. So I did submit a letter late today asking for further adjournment of a public hearing, or if the board's, you know, there's another option which we spoke about last time regarding another project. If the board felt so inclined to close this hearing, then we would certainly provide for an extension or a waiver of this board making any kind of decision within 62 days. That would at least way it wouldn't be showing up on the planning board agenda, but again, I leave that to you, the boards make that presentation.
Want to bring us up to speed on that? Is there anything?
Well, you know, the reason it keeps getting adjourned is because we have a water resource permit process, and if the wetland meets the town's requirements for requiring a water resource permit, there has to be a public hearing at the planning board level for that. So we've been, we kept thinking that this information was just going to be coming, so, you know, and it hasn't been surveyed or whatnot, so, you know, at this point, it's just difficult to the extent that, you know, if that happens, then we've got to come back to another public hearing for it again. So is there a definitive timeframe on?
Survey schedule, I mean, again, I wouldn't ask for it for next month. I'd ask for another two months just to provide some buffer. I've done that before, and it's not been enough buffer, but that's why I would ask for it. I certainly wouldn't want to re-advertise, you know, although I don't believe anybody showed up.
They did in the beginning. There was some people, but.
Okay. So, you know, adjourn it so incorporates that particular religion if one's needed.
What's the size of the wetland?
We don't know. You've got to delineate it and survey it to show it to us, you know. That's the rub.
But isn't there a new criteria for that sort of thing as far as the size goes?
Well, there's criteria for the town's purposes for the water resource permit, and then obviously there's the environmental, for which you're the lead agency. So regardless of regulation of it, it's still a wetland, it's still a feature that has to be considered, and you have to account for it in your environmental determination. So whatever that disposition of that might be, I mean, maybe the wetland where it is can actually be maintained, I don't know. It has to be filled, I don't know, but we have to be able to see it and be able to make that decision, you know.
Mike, why is it not, I don't understand why is it not being defined?
Well, I think it was determined, and again, a little hazy because it does go back, but on the, let's call it the parcel access, you know, for lack of a better, there's a couple of different sources, but on that there shows a core wetland on the property, kind of up, not in the area we're developing, but further up. We had a wetland biologist go out there, take a look at it, and made a determination that, I believe it was, that it was not, that wetland was not there. That being said, it was brought up that, well, there's still a water course there.
Still what?
A water course or a ditch, and it's kind of a dry ditch, you know, and it rains, right? It's not, that's perennial and so forth. So we have to get that on paper. It's got to be on there tight. This is a, this is actually, a previous subdivision was approved and filed, not that we were dealing with the regulations in the town, we are today, those have changed, but it did show picking up that square and wrapping around the property and then running it down to Pleasant Bridge Road. So the presumption is is we're still going to have to do something like that, and I think we showed that on the latest plan. But again, the level of moving it and what the impact would be in these programs, right, Dan has indicated that, you know, we do have a provision that has to take a look at that.
Chair, yeah, so we do have, we have regulations regarding wetlands, water bodies, and water course protection, and there's good reasons for that. And so I think it would behoove us to understand what the extent of the water course is. If there is in fact a water course out there, we need to factor that into our decisions, especially as it pertains to our seeker assessment.
Right.
You know, again, it's understood it's something that does run when the weather's wet, otherwise it tends to be dry. So once we at least get it tight on paper, then we have to make that determination to check and see if it falls under the criteria of that water course based upon the fact that it may be dry, you know, 95% of the year, something happens to evaluate it at that time.
Nobody's been up to map it or walked it?
It's, it's, yes, we've had somebody go out there after making the first determination that the wetland's shown on the parcel access map is not there, but that there is now a water course, so it has been flagged, it just got to be surveyed.
It has to be surveyed?
Surveyed, so it's shown tight.
When are we going to get it surveyed?
I can give you his phone number. It's, you know, what I'm joking at is saying that it's been tough getting, you know, not just who we're dealing, whatever we're working with, it's just tough getting this information timed.
So we have two choices, right Dan? And Greg, you want us to adjourn, or do you want us, from his letter to us a couple of hours ago, he indicated that the applicant was willing to waive the 62-day requirement.
He has no choice but to waive because he hasn't, you have before you a very incomplete application.
Right.
So it is the board's prerogative to adjourn the public hearing. It'd probably be for, I would say, two months because it's going to take at least that in order to get maps.
It's going to take longer than that. Look at the time of year. Already.
Yes.
The members of the public, not a couple of us, but several of us, think that there is a public hearing.
Right.
I think the public has been disrespected in the postponement. Every time the postponement is at the last minute. Now, I've come at the end for a public hearing. My issues do not have to do with the wetlands. This is the first I'm hearing about. My issues are hanging issues, issues that were left dangling over steep slopes and trees, which we never got access to. And I feel like before you postponed the public hearing, I should have an opportunity to speak tonight.
Okay.
It's just frustrating because the public is constantly rushed off by this, I think it's been eight or nine months. I think it's on, it's on, it's relentless. So I asked for an opportunity to speak, and then you can adjourn it after that or whatever.
Let's deliberate. Thank you, and I appreciate your concern and.
The public hearing, will you open it?
No, we did not. It's, we didn't.
It was adjourned.
It was adjourned.
Which means that it was adjourned to this meeting.
Right.
And then we, you know.
We would need to open.
The public's aware that it's adjourned to the meeting. They come with the expectation that we're going to, they're going to have the opportunity to speak. I see no problem in allowing, keeping the meeting open, allowing them to speak, and then we can adjourn it to the next meeting if we feel like we still don't have enough information to close it.
It's pretty standard that we let the applicant start with a presentation anyway, so.
So with that.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So the public hearing is open. Thank you, Mr. Crane.
Yep.
Thank you. Bill Crane, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. The, there's been a concern about the steep slopes here. The comprehensive plan recommendation, N R Action 1.1.2, states very simply, his recommendation is to prohibit development on steep slopes. As you know, mudslides can come from those, soil erosion can come. The applicant is, a few months ago, proposed retaining wall. We don't know what kinds of, we had the heaviest rain that I remember a month ago, and we don't know what kinds of rains are coming. And the applicant is cutting down some unspecified number of trees. It said it's something in the 80s if I remember exactly and planting four. What kind of litigation, as you know, this, these prevent soil erosion, cutting down all those trees, and the wildlife that live in them, they absorb carbon dioxide, they provide oxygen. It's like the town needs the trees. So I think this, considering the steep slopes and the vague, vagueness of the plan before, we had another unknown thrown into the situation, I think, this is one proposal I think should go back to the drawing board. This is, it shouldn't have been, I really think this one overdoes, goes overboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crane.
Hey, Michael, what was roughly the percentage of intrusion in reference to the slopes?
There were some on the bottom of this, with deep slopes that we were pushing into, the number of.
Right.
I don't fortunately have the map of it, but it was a single driveway, and they spurted off, and I know we were trying to keep that to a minimum, but I know some of the fire concerns, we're trying to make it a little bit easier to get up to there, so we're kind of touching, you know, some of those slopes as well. So, you know, obviously minimum for what we needed, the houses are not put any further into the property than absolutely they need to based upon having a section in the front.
No, I just wondered how much of an intrusion in what the degree of slope, shall we say, is that's.
Yeah, it's a fair question. Unfortunately, again, knowing that we're likely going to adjourn, I definitely don't have a copy of that plan, but one of the things that I will do is I will keep the town engineer and the town advisor from here to the next point of the next meeting, you know, with the dialogue that we have internally, try to push the surveyors, so at least everybody knows what's going on, you know, there's progress, because it's going to take some push to get the information we need. But if you want to go ahead and adjourn it, I wouldn't adjourn it for a month. I'd adjourn it for at least the drive toward. It's just a time, we go to here and then by the time you have to submit, it's basically week and a half, just not a time there.
See, there's always a rush to go to public hearing, but there isn't enough preparation, you know, and that's, that's the frustration that the town engineer has and we all have. Now we're in a situation where we're leading the public on, you know, as Mr. Crane had explained. What would be the downside, Dan, Greg, to us closing this with them waiving? Is there a downside to the public commenting? And any changes that come up or problems or issues?
Only to the extent that if there's a wetland shown, then they have to tell us what they're going to do with that wetland. I mean, the public would have an opportunity to speak on that.
Right.
At a regular planning board meeting. If it was a public hearing on the water resource permit, even more so.
Right.
You know, so I don't know.
So.
The whole intent of having it, you know, we kept thinking, we don't want to have to advertise to everybody again. I mean, it costs a lot of money to send certified mail to everybody, it costs a lot of money to, you know, but I understand the people that keep coming, you know, it's a fine balance here.
So what if instead of saying we put it up to the next meeting, let's be realistic.
Two months.
December, January, February? If you have an open, if you, if we have an open winter, somebody can map that, which is what's got to be done, right?
Well, I'm hoping it'll happen in the next month, you know, that allows.
Yeah, but something like that's not, to me anyway, doesn't seem feasible this time of year. I can see merit in just keeping, journeying the, you know, meeting, public hearing based on.
Till March, you want to?
Do we have to be confined to a date? Can't we just continue to adjourn it to the next meeting? I don't know why we're restricting ourselves to a certain date.
I think the idea.
I would say March or something.
Is for the public, so they're not going to be, they're not going to show up next month and the month after. I don't, is that fair, or am I?
December, January, February. I would say March if you're.
If there's little information, they should know.
Well, let me ask you, if the public does come to the next meeting, but we adjourned it to, let's say, January, do they then not have an opportunity to speak up at the next meeting?
That's.
To me, it seems the best thing is to just keep it the most flexible.
Okay.
If the public doesn't show at the next meeting, then we just adjourn it to the following one. It's not a real.
Who in the audience is out there in reference to this project besides Bill Crane?
Anyone else? Okay.
Personally.
You know, and the truth is.
I understand what, Rob, I understand what you're saying, but I would, I would say March. Now, we don't, do we have a list, email list of the people that?
There was a gentleman who was a next door neighbor.
No, but do we have an email list of the people that received the notice?
She says yes.
Sure, we have a list and I have.
Okay, so my suggestion is that, we've got a very active secretary now in planning, and my suggestion is, is that she sends a notice to the people that have been notified via certified mail that this has been postponed, an explanation of the reason why, and a statement that the next public hearing would be in March.
Are we setting a precedent that we're going to have to do this every time? And do we have email list of all the people?
Email?
No, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah. Sounds like we're breaking procedure.
Right.
Pete, I get what you're trying to do, but I'm thinking that it would be best if we followed Rob's lead on this and just keep deferring it. It's certainly not fair to the public.
Well, it's not fair to the public to have them come every meeting.
Well, we've generated.
Can't we communicate?
The public has just generated some sentiments on the plan. I'd like to see him come back and address these issues.
Yeah.
I'd like to.
We're not going to be.
With the plan at the next meeting so that we can discuss these issues.
Mike, going forward, we will not be scheduling public hearings until comment letters are completely answered.
Yeah, no, I think we spoke about that last.
Yeah, just, just to be abundantly clear about this, because it's an awkward situation we're in right now, and I'd like to avoid it in the future.
How many people are on the mailing? Roughly.
We also have to address Mr. Crane's questions, which were, you know, about the steep slopes, the trees, things like that.
Yeah, no, I'd like to make.
So that's why, that's why it's important for us to just let this play out unfortunately until we can, we can close the hearing and are satisfied.
The, another issue, just a separate issue, the water course designation. The fact that you're identifying the water course, that as far as I can tell, the way to classify whether there's a water course is by the definitions in the code. And so the definition is water course classification and identification. New York State D E C identifies certain waters in the town of Beekman that are classified and protected on the basis of the existing or expected best usage of these waters. This information is available in the town of Beekman Stream Classification Document as prepared by the Duchess County Environmental Management Council from New York State D E C Biological Survey Series dated 1991. So that's the answer to the question of whether it's a water course or not. That's the definition of water course.
It's already established.
It's not whether it's wet or running or not running, it's whether it's been classified as such on a map. And that's why I believe you're, I'm assuming that's why you're locating it on the drawings because it's classified per that definition.
Well, that classification, I can confidently say it's not, it's not detailed on a D E C mapping relative to, I mean, across the street, there's a stream, and that's protected wetland, but in terms of what's on this property, that's not, that's not a D E C.
Here's the, here's the thing. I was told by the applicant that there are flags on the site that delineate a wetland. It wasn't necessarily wet water course, I don't know what it is.
Yeah.
I've got to see it on the plan.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah.
That's all there is to it.
Right. Okay.
You know.
I just want to clarify what's the rationale.
So let's.
We got to move.
So to Mr. Crane's point, all right, I think a date of completion of all of this should be established, and, I mean, if, given that we're being lenient and we're putting the public in an awkward situation here, if, if by March, all comments and issues haven't been resolved, then what, what is our, are we capable of closing this application and having a restart? Because of.
Good question.
Yeah.
If the water course, the water course.
Because then, you know, the public would, would need to be brought back up to speed with a new public hearing once the application is complete.
You're going to have to weigh the hardship to the applicant who spent a lot of money and time. To your point, you're also going to be hearing this application again. If that applicant does come back, you're going to have to hear all about it again. And we've already heard it. I think that a hard stop, I, to be honest, would never heard of one, but they've always worked out. But I understand the frustration, but there's not a lot of people here at this public hearing that have been attending.
Okay.
So I would err on the side of the applicant for now. I would advise you to do that, but.
That's fine.
Chair, I appreciate your concerns, but, you know, the applicant has rights too. We can't just close his application. We have to have, it has to meet the requirements of our code before we do that. But I think we're overthinking it.
Okay.
I think regardless of what's going on here is the, we had a complaint from a resident that said that he's been coming to meetings and he, I believe what his concern was that he wanted to be able to speak, which.
Right.
Mission accomplished. We opened it up and he got a chance to speak. So I don't think there's a big problem here we're trying to solve. The fact that we opened up the meeting without enough information, that's the problem, and we're going to address that in the future. But with the cat's out of the bag, we already did it. We need to continue with this, and my suggestion would be that we just adjourn it to the next meeting. Hopefully, will his surveyor have gotten back to us? In worst case scenario, if he hasn't and we don't have complete information, then we'll adjourn it to the following meeting. But at that next meeting, certainly we'll keep the, we'll keep our options open to opening up the meeting so that if someone does come, they'll have the ability to speak.
What's the problem with putting it off, Rob?
The problem with putting it off is someone may come with knowing that we've adjourned it, and then they're going to potentially.
It's not closed.
Want to speak.
And he has, he has a list of the abutting neighbors that were notified. Why can't we send a mailing to them?
No, I think.
Yeah, it's not legal. It's not, it's not within our procedures.
And I'm not sure what problem you're trying to fix.
Right.
I don't see what we're trying to fix here. If you can tell me.
Well, we're, all right, fine.
It's just not legal procedure, you know. We have to notify them by mail, not by email.
Can I say water?
Oh, you go ahead.
In towns, other municipalities, sometimes there's a large period of time that occurs between the setting up a public hearing and then getting that additional information based upon sometimes what comes from the public. Sometimes it takes time to get that. I don't, you know, I understand it's a few bucks for certified mailings, but I would not say maybe this month, unfortunately, this is public here, unfortunately, but if we could do, what's that, November? December? We could do January, okay, and we have the information together, and if the board feels that we should re-advertise this for February, then we can do that. It's, I've done that before. That way the board feels comfortable, everybody knows, we've got new information on the plan, everything's been covered and so forth. You know, we have a member from the public here tonight, which if the board decides to push this to Jan, uh, January, he's absolutely aware of that.
All right. Let's just move on, all right?
I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
Okay, so that we do, let's see.
I think we just keep moving.
December 21?
You don't have to vote, you know, abstain, vote no.
Yeah, December 21.
I get what you're saying, but we're not going to let this happen again going forward. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
You want?
It's all communications, that's.
Yep.
Who are we missing tonight?
So the next item on the agenda is the Pezzuto Lot Line.
I thought I got a notice.
I sent a letter in today as well. I guess they haven't made progress with the D E C.
Right.
They've received comments from the D E C regarding the wetland permitting, but they're still awaiting comments from our.
still awaiting comments from our core as well, apparently, which that could take a while. And their surveyor's still preparing subdivision plan.
Okay.
So, they've asked to be adjourned as well. They didn't ask for a date specific, but again, we might, we have to, we have to adjourn it to a date specific.
Okay. So, a motion to continue the adjournment?
So moved?
Until January?
Another one of those.
No, I thought Dan just said it has to go to the next meeting.
December.
It just has to be a specific date.
December, right?
He said it has to be a specific date.
So, the December meeting, which is what?
Technically, we have not set meeting dates for twenty twenty four.
Next year, that's right.
Which happens at the December meeting.
Right.
So.
We'll adjourn it to the December meeting.
That's how I feel about it.
And the date?
December twenty one.
December twenty one.
I'll make a motion to adjourn it to December twenty one.
Second.
If you wanna ask if anybody from the public would want to speak on this one right now too, in case they did come, you could always do that as well.
Oh, all right, I retract my, my motion.
Just a thought, because.
No, you're right. You're absolutely right.
Is there anybody in the public?
I make a motion to open up the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on the Pezzuto Lot Line? Okay?
I'll make a motion to adjourn it until December twenty first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. You got that, I wasn't going.
There we go. Okay, so under discussion, eighty-three church contractor yard.
Good evening, Jeff, econ, consultant for the applicant. We're here to sort of legalize an existing use that's been going on for a number of years at eighty-three church. It's a parcel, it's two parcels, one, the overall parcel is four point eight six acres. The residential portion is three point six four acres. You have point eight acres across the street to try and look at piece of property that has two barns on it. Apparently, it's been used as the contractor that lives in the house, he's storing his equipment there, so we are trying to legalize the use. It's in a commercial zone, so meets the zone. I got Dan's comments today. I went through them. You know, just a couple of questions, you know, that came up there. Dan, there is no, with regards to full secret, there is no residential.
Could you do me a favor and raise the mic?
Sure, sorry.
I'm definitely losing my hearing. My wife will confirm that.
I don't speak loud either, my kids tell me.
Thank you, that's fine.
The use in the barns is basically, the bottom floor is where he stores his equipment. Upstairs, he has his office where, you know, does his paperwork, et cetera. So, there is no residential component, so I know that question came up with regards to the secret determination. Another question that did come up is the use of the old barn. It's sort of in bad shape out there. He plans in the future to rehabilitate that structure and utilize that for equipment storage also, so there'll be no residential component on that side. There's an existing well and septic that do serve that parcel of property. The driveway that's there currently is actually been there since the nineteen forties. I've actually, when I can print it out on the Dutchess County website, all the areas from the forties up to current, it used to be a U-shaped driveway, it's, the U-shape is gone, it's just one access point there.
Are there two, two barns together there, or is it one across the street?
No, there's two barns on the parcel, one on either side of the existing driveway.
Yes, yeah, yeah, okay.
It's former's house across the street, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, the, the house, the residential house is on the, you know, street.
Right.
You know, we put on the map to put a six-foot chain link fence with a, insert with slats so year-round it would be protection from fifty-five and also from the southern end of the property, so it'd be no.
I just wanna receive clarification on something. Does our code permit chain link?
It does. In certain areas, it does not, if you're in a scenic road or scenic U shed area or within town center, I believe is also.
Cause we kind of. Yeah.
There are mentions of chain link fence in there, and in, in a lot of the cases that where it is allowed, they talk about putting in the privacy slats.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
I had a conversation with Dan actually before we made this application, trying to find out what everyone would be looking for, and this is one of the things that we thought would be beneficial to everyone around the site, so to block anything. As far as the other comments, most of the comments I've received today are standard comments, I'll have them addressed with the next meeting, I'll see any issues with those.
So, is the entire lot considered C two, including the residential portion across the street?
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a land hook that goes through Church Street, so both, both the east side, the east side is the one that has barns, the west side is the one that has the residential structure.
By the way, I, I think the owner did a terrific job restoring the one barn.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's the current owner who did that. Yeah, he did a fantastic job. And if he's got any intentions of restoring the other barn, I think the town is going to have the benefit of the restoration of two beautiful barns.
That is the ultimate goal.
It might behoove you then just to say that that barn is gonna be restored by some point, and further into the use of the site for contractor storage yard, because then you wouldn't have to come back here, you know, based on.
I'll, I'll put a note on that, I.
It depends on his timeframe, obviously, but, you know, if it's, if it's years out, then maybe, you know, maybe that wouldn't work, but just a thought.
Yeah, I, I actually had a call when I read some of your comments, I had a call Gary, because I'm actually trying to help Gary out now. Recently retired after thirty-four years of government service, so I do consulting on the side now, so really not retired, but trying to keep active.
Very nice.
Am I, am I okay to speak, Chair?
Please.
Okay. The, I think it's an appropriate use for the site. I never have a problem with it, and I was happy that they were making improvements to the, to the barns. Being a C two district, it's probably the only place, the only district within the zoning code that would really, is the most appropriate place for contractor's yards. Contractor's yards are needed, there's not enough of them. A lot of people are parking their equipment behind their houses and stuff and getting in trouble with their neighbors, and locating a contractor yard within a, a commercial zone is probably the most appropriate thing you can do if you're gonna have a contractor yard, and the way he's doing it, in my opinion, seems to be the most aesthetically pleasing way of handling it. They're not the most beautiful places, contractor yards, but he's really, you know, doing a nice job restoring barns and, and, you know, maybe buffering it from the road with a, with a fence, so I, I don't really have any big issues with this application. That's where I stand on it.
I didn't hear that last part, Rob.
The fact that he's buffering the, you know, that he's putting up a fence to conceal the contractor operation from the road, I think is, is very appropriate and a good idea, and, and I, again, I just think he's, it's, it's the right place for a contractor yard, and he's doing the right thing with the property.
Well, we've already given two permits on the other side of fifty-five.
Right.
One next to Kenny Mall, and that's under construction.
Yeah.
And Sally further down the road. So, I don't see where there's, and I agree with you, having watched the barn be restored, in many ways, it's more aesthetically pleasing than what's on the other side of the road.
Yeah.
Don't put the fence up. But, yeah, I, I agree, Rob, I think it's, I think they'd fit in.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing we should worry about is its proximity to fifty-five. We just wanna make sure that materials, building materials won't migrate down to the road or, you know, that we're protecting, you know, that it's being done in a way that, you know, the road is protected. There's a lot of big boulders and stuff, and he's doing, he's stacking them correctly, and I'm not that concerned about it, but it's, if I were to think of something that we should, you know, an issue that we should maybe just talk about is to make sure that he's, he's, there's no chance that there'll be spillover onto the road or any potential safety hazards.
Yeah, there's, it is in the aquifer overlay, is that correct? Any concerns about fuel and spillage and?
Yeah, that's, that's part of it, right?
Maintenance of excavating equipment and that sort of thing, cause usually that involves all sorts of mechanical fluids.
Actually, you're gonna be asked to issue findings of fact, and the engineer here is gonna have to address those, and you're gonna issue a report, because it is in the aquifer overlay district, so you're gonna have to have a secret analysis and make a determination. So, even, this is a special use permit, it's allowed in C two, but because it's in the aquifer overlay, you have to take another consideration of these tests, we included one fifty-five twelve, so I direct the applicant to look at one fifty-five twelve and comply with all of these questions that are, are, are brought forward in the, within the code regarding degradation of groundwater and long-term effects on, on the water, groundwater to private water supplies and sewage and things like that. It's, it's a detailed test, but it's something that the court, the, the planning board has to consider actually, and a detailed report and address them as a, a detailed findings decision under the, under the code. So, this is gonna be characterized as a, classified as a unlisted action. You have to then go through site plan process for that. Dan, anything you want to add?
No, I guess we'd only have to just consider, we're gonna do a coordinated review or uncoordinated review for unlisted action on this case.
Variances?
I'm not sure what outside permits might be required. It did mention health department in my letter, just only to get an understanding of what that septic system is, what the capacity of it is, is whether or not that was considered of employees coming in and out during the day, or however the operation ends up working. So, I don't know if there's any information on that, you can get back to us on that for sure. That would be an outside agency that could be potentially involved. Other than that, they're not coming off the state road. There's not any tree removal as far as I know, so there shouldn't be any endangered species issues in terms of that, so I don't think there's any D.C. permits that I can think of at this time here, so.
State DOT will definitely have to be notified as an interested agency because the property does border the average fifty-five, you know?
Yeah, so if we're doing the coordinated review, then, so coordinated review agencies, we always do the D.C., do the health department, we tend to send it to the Department of Planning and Development, the county, Town of Beekman Highway, cause Church Street. Might as well send it to the zoning board appeals at that point, too.
Yeah.
Conservation Advisory Council and fire advisory board. Those would be, those would be the agencies potentially interested or involved that we could, we could draft up a circulation letter to that effect and have the, the planning department send it out. You know, they, they provided us with a full EAF, right?
Yes, I did.
Which is probably overkill for unlisted action, I believe you can deal with a short EAF on that, but, so I, I didn't review the full EAF in, in the anticipation that this could be typed through or unlisted, subject to the town attorney's review, so.
Since there's, it's, it's actually a legalism, or the applicant is trying to legalize an existing use, in this case, pictures actually would be very beneficial to rule out certain uses that are barred under the aquifer overlay district, you know? So, the pictures are going to show that it's not industrial sludge or fertilizer storage or pesticides are being, you know, used there. So, I think pictures in this case are useful and will help outside agencies as well.
And you may wanna consider some mitigation measures for any kind of mechanical work that might be happening, where there could be some diesel or hydrofluores that, that make their way to the ground. You know, there's certain matings that can be put down that will absorb all that before it gets into the ground, and they could have provisions for.
Best, best management practices?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll talk to the, the owner of the property, maybe we could, I'll put a note on the drawing that, you know, any repair work, maintenance work would be, you know, has to be done inside, so it's on a concrete slab.
Yeah, and, and that would be part of the addressing of the standards for one fifty-five twelve, so there's five standards in subsection D that we ask you to take the first stab at, you know, and then the board gets to consider if those are appropriate responses to those, and if they're not, then we can talk about other mitigation things that might make their minds up on, on saying yes or no to that, so.
No problem.
Is there fueling there? Is there like a fuel tank?
None right now, no.
No.
Is there intention to put a fuel tank?
I'm gonna have to talk to the property owner, have Gary talk to the property owner.
So, if there is intention of having fuel there, are we looking at best management practices for?
Have it in a, have it in a steel unit, yep.
Yeah, maybe a canopy over it?
Open up a gas station here?
If it's exterior.
With an aquifer overlay area, you could do that.
What, storage tanks?
Fuel storage.
Well, there is a provision in here at section F seven that any installation or construction or placement would have to be above ground, or should be above ground.
Well, today it is basically anyway. I believe with D.C. when it comes to fuel storage, double.
Tank, containment, et cetera, yes.
Yeah, the, the town reserves a right to actually prohibit installation, certain installations and expansions, so, because that's a discretionary act, you might wanna just, you know, expound on that, on the plans for that.
You know, if there's certain things that are not proposed when you speak to the line, certainly by all means, you can put a note on there that there will be no whatever, no storage of fertilizers or pesticides or other things that might be of concern for the aquifer, you know, so.
Yeah, he's, he's a general contractor, so he wouldn't have any of that, so.
Right, so, so just notate that on the plan, and then that way it becomes part of the record that the planning board didn't, you know, considered that. record that the planning board had considered that. No, I think we touched on a number of the things in the letter. I mean, our comment number 16 is just regarding landscaping, which is typical for site plans, special use permits, so just wanted to throw it out there for the planning board. If there needed to be any landscaping out there, maybe you do a site visit and take a look at what's there now, so if you feel like there's anything that can be added on or benefit, or you can talk about it now, if you want to just put that on a placeholder.
I mean, to be fair to other applicants, we did inquire buffering...
Yeah.
On the other project across the street.
Yeah, there's more, also more exposed, and this is if they're going to put a fence up with...
Slats.
The slats.
That ribbing in.
It's going to help to hide it, plus the fact that, Rob, you would, you notice the property as you're driving towards Poughkeepsie, but you do not notice the property as you're driving towards Pauling.
That's right.
Hmm?
You're right.
Yeah, I think that's part of the reason why the sight lines were shown there also on the second sheet of the plan set, to give perspective of the elevation difference from 55 up to the site.
Right.
Yes, that was part of the, of the comment letter with regard to planning board discussion. We have had, not just related to the aquifer overlay, but related to fire department, when we've had contract guards in the past, if there were any storage of any kind of hazardous materials, we would ask that they be identified, so that either the fire department would have an MSDS on it, or something to know what's in there before they access the building. And that, we would normally ask that the town building department has copy of that as well, just to have an understanding.
No problem.
Just lighting, that's typical. This will have to go through a 239 general municipal law referral, so it will go to the county. Undoubtedly, they'll ask about landscaping and lighting, but more than likely, they're going to leave it up to the town. But oftentimes, they'll say it's a matter of local concern, but with some comments, so before we do the 239, we'd like to at least have some of these addressed, and in that way, we know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I got, you know, the two sides. I have the, with the fence, the only side that's not landscaped is with the homeowner, the property owner, what he's going to say. And he probably wants to have visibility of his site from his house, just to make sure no mischief or anything else they have in the pocket.
Sounds like a reasonable thing. I mean, Church Street is a dead end there, so.
Right. Anything else?
No, so at this point, then, what you would do is, if you're inclined to declare your intent to act as lead agency for an unlisted action, coordinated review, and we'll send it out to the agencies I listed before.
Okay. Motion, unlisted, declare ourselves lead?
I'd like to make a motion that this is an unlisted action, and that we, the planning board be lead agency.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
The motion is really to circulate for notice of intent.
Right, notice to act as, notice of intent to act as lead agency. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Okay.
Just a small point, but it's, but it's a good point.
It's very important.
Yeah. We're good, right?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Once we have the circulation already, the planning department may reach out to you for additional copies.
No, that's the guy, he's trying to...
Some of them go electronic, some of them go hard copy.
He's going west.
Subdivision map, do you want a copy of that now, or next question?
Uh, but that like Sylon, right?
Yes.
Just a requirement in the code.
Did a good job on the problem.
No problem.
Should we do a copy?
Unless there's something on there that changes anything.
No, no.
Let's just get it going.
All right.
No problem.
Get it done.
Thank you.
So...
Take care.
Thank you.
I noticed, Craig, that you almost referred to this as a court.
I know.
Do we need to refer to you as Judge Wallace?
No, 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 please.
Counselor.
So...
I just stuck my...
I'd like to say congratulations to Judge Wallace, who is now judge of...
Not yet.
Of Kipsey.
January 1st.
Yes, January 1st.
Thank you.
Yep.
We have the Baker Hill subdivision for discussion.
So, the last, this was before the board was, not last month, but the month before, a couple of things happened at that meeting. As you recall, we originally had seven lots, and everyone had done five lots, and then to try and keep away from steep slopes and things such as that. All the lots already have shifted, it's really harried down towards the south end of this. So what you see here now is a, the conservation subdivision, which the board endorsed. We, the board declared its intent to serve as lead agent. We went ahead and circulated. I don't believe there was any opposition to that. That's certainly a step that we could take, the board could take tonight, if we felt so inclined. I think I had mentioned that we went ahead and actually done our soil testing and things such as that in the septic areas, so pretty confident in terms of what we have out there. We don't believe those are going to change much, and we're in the process of making that application to them. I think we have a letter received today from Dan's office. Maybe Dan, I don't know if you want to go through those. One of the things, again, for requests, and what was a period of delay about Pauling now at this point, is getting the trees in the area at a certain time. Those are not on the plan yet. The surveyor scheduled to brought them, and got those on there. So therefore, coming, then we may have to move some things around, try and preserve those as best we can. I think that's the general synopsis.
So I know there's other, other comments that aren't satisfied at this point.
Yeah, so, just a few things. We've mentioned this a couple of times with that other three acre parcel, you know, it's owned by the same person, and the code talks to, you know, including the analysis of the development potential of it, and it sounds like there's no development potential. We've mentioned in the past, maybe incorporating it into this application, which would actually, in theory, would actually reduce recreation fees. So I think this is probably the last time I'll mention it, just because, I don't know, it sounds like a reasonable thing, that lot is, I mean, I can't imagine it ever being developed, but...
Yeah, I've had the discussion with the applicant, one of the applicants. You know, I guess there was some training on there, maybe from the fire department, because of the slopes and things such as that that I've heard in the past. I will mention it one more time. I know that I did provide notation on here, that there is no development intent of that parcel, which is...
Where's that?
It's, it's the parcel, yeah.
Where's that?
It's, it's just...
Next to the conservation easement.
Yeah, down slope. It's even worse than the other part, right?
Right.
Yeah, and then the water course runs down at the base of that, so.
Right. That's the contiguous lot you were referring to, right, Greg?
Yeah, it's under the same ownership.
Right, okay.
And that's why that, that one section of our code speaks to that, 130-15B5. And then 130-18F9 says the boundaries of contiguous on lands are required to be shown. So what they've done is they've shown it on the area map that they own that one, but it's not, the meets and bounds, it's not included in this application, but I've kind of just said, if it's not going to be buildable, you may want to include it in this application, put it into that one, you know, lot one, but basically include it in the conservation area.
Yeah, actually, the code has a segmentation. It calls for any contiguous properties to be included in this application, so it should be, to avoid segmentation.
So it's not really a request, it's what needs to be done?
It's required under the code, I think it's...
I think there's provision, too, if you make it abundantly clear that in fact there is no development intent, I mean, and so forth. I mean, we're being very upfront about that, not something that, you know, we're kind of keeping to the side and come back to it later, because I think that's the intent of segmentation. I mean, I'll have that discussion again.
That is not current. Because there's, this is all something I...
And included in the conservation.
Yeah, it would have to be...
Save $5,000 in recreation fee.
Right.
So I, I'm very confused.
It would have to be...
Stop paying taxes on it, too.
You're referring to lot number one?
Right.
And adding to lot number one, so... Adding to lot number one?
Yeah, if you look at the point...
The lot number is 842016.
Beyond that is another piece of property that Mr. Ferris owns, that has steep slopes and not, right.
So you're saying combining that into lot number one?
Or to the conservation easement?
Yeah, well, maybe I overspoke with that.
Or to the conservation easement, right?
Yeah, which would be part of the lot, yeah.
Right.
So if you kind of incorporate it in, then you have two lots, parent lots, five lots total, so you're paying for three rec fees instead of four. That's, that was kind of my, my take on it, and then, you know, if I continue to pay property and school taxes on it at that point, if it's not going to ever be developed, you're not intending to develop it, there's no clear use of that property that makes any sense.
If we leave it as a separate lot, then someday someone's going to come back and say, I have a hardship.
Right.
I, I have this building lot, and you need to allow me to build a house there.
Yeah, or they may want to put a zip line there.
That might work.
Might, right? So...
It's where the road's washed.
What's that?
I think that's where the road is washed.
Yeah, the road is, the road is...
Yes, yes.
Drainage and erosion issues in that area, so.
Yeah.
So you're saying combine that in with lot number one?
Yes, a suggestion. But Greg may be right, I mean, I, actually, if I missed that, but it's, it has to be brought into the application.
Yeah, it does have to be.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Fire code, or statute.
Because it's not appearing anywhere.
All right, I understand, I'm in a court, so where do we go from here?
Discussion.
What does the applicant have to say there?
Yeah.
I just, I've had this discussion a few times.
He's going to put it on the plans.
I don't make more press conference, I don't, I don't...
Yeah, right, of course.
The one thing that, and that I thought maybe we could reserve a little bit of discussion would be the conservation...
Yeah, I was going to get to that, too. I think, you know, the planning board, based on this fact that this is a conservation application at this point, has the ability to reduce the bulk requirements, so we listed the three requirements that aren't being met, and I think it's fair to make sure that we advise the applicant that we would accept those. So in the case of the minimum lot width, it's supposed to be 200 feet per R90, the smallest lot with, on there is 150, so the suggestion was to just reduce the lot width by planning board action to 150 feet. Minimum road frontage for the R90 zone is 100 feet. In one case, or the smallest case, is 65.7 for proposed lot five, so we'd say, you know, reduce the road frontage requirement to 65 feet, let's say. And then for the front setback, 100 feet is required by R90, on lots one and two, those are the ones that are coming, kind of coming off, and then it drops down, so trying to keep them closer to the road will also help preserve steep slopes and the trees on those steep slopes. So they're proposing 54.8 feet, so I'd say, let's just say that the front setback requirement is 50 feet there. So if the, if the planning board agrees to that, I think, I don't know, there needs to be a motion on that, or if it's just a acceptance of those.
Sketch plan.
Yeah, they, they, we, they've been granted sketch approval on this conservation layout, but now, as a result of them having conservation, the code says that the planning board can reduce certain bulk requirements to facilitate the conservation. So there, they have lots that wouldn't be compliant for R90, but because they're doing conservation, the planning board can...
Understood. The, the consideration, we were just talking about with respect to sketch plan, for the inclusion of this three acre lot, the lot 842016, which is contiguous to the 26 acre lot that is before this board, the code says at 13015B5, where the lands to be subdivided represent only a portion of any and all contiguous lands owned in whole or part by the subdivider, the development potential for all lands should be adequately considered, so as not to segment the review, as prohibited by seeker. So that means that the three acre parcel must be considered, and that might, that inclusion of that three acre lot might satisfy the bulk area at that point, I don't know, you tell me. But if you have that inclusion, you now have a 29 acre parcel. But you, the, the board can relax those other standards than is the conservation easement. So if that's going to be the case, the, I have a motion, but...
Want us to vote on it?
Where was that?
Yeah, I'm just going to pull that right up, because it's in 130-45.
We follow it?
Spare it with me for one second. Okay, 130-45, F doesn't spring, says heights, bulk, coverage, location, and land uses, in order to encourage and enable a residential conservation development of desirable and imaginative design, and to maintain a flexibility of this chapter, specific controls of the height, bulk, and lot coverage of buildings and location of the various permitted land uses and public facilities are not contained in this section. Instead, it is required that all stages of residential conservation development should be developed according to a comprehensive final plan for the overall development, as approved by the planning board, which shall conform to the requirements of this chapter. And then it goes on, let's see, so, just bear it with me for another minute.
Hey, Jimmy. You don't anticipate any problem with that contiguous lot, adding it to the... You don't anticipate any problem with, uh, that contiguous lot, adding it to the, uh, proposal?
I personally don't, I obviously didn't have any, a bit of a concern, but for some reason, but I'm not sure why. To me, it, it seems to make sense, and, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't really accomplish it, unless, maybe he thinks he could sell it to, is there another landowner right next door or a state or some of those that might want to buy it? I don't know. That, that's the one thing I can imagine.
Isn't that a little steep slopes there, Mike?
It is. I mean, it's not useful for anything.
Other than backing up and dumping your garbage down towards the stream.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
Is that a good place to do that?
I just...
That's a good, that's a good spot to do that?
He knows some spots.
Just to clarify, you have to, you don't have to consider it for seeker purposes.
Say that again?
The contiguous property would have to be considered for seeker purposes, so it's not segmented down the road.
Is it subject to discussion here? Is it, is it up to the applicant to, um, decide whether it is or isn't connected to this application or not?
It, it just needs to be, um, considered by this board for seeker purposes, the, the, that particular lot, the use of that lot.
But it does not have to become a part of this application? Dan was merely trying to, uh, consider the, the finances of, of the rec fees?
There's more than that.
Or is there more to it than that?
At the end of the day, if, if you were to try to look at the development potential of that site, we would have to, um, consider the fact that we would need steep slopes permitting, um, the fact that there probably couldn't really be a septic system placed there in accordance with health department regulations.
Road frontage?
Uh, the frontage should be okay, but...
Or a setback.
But, um, setbacks could be an issue for sure, because it's not very deep, actually, but, um, then there's water course and wetland at the very bottom of it, so there's going to be buffers into that that come up the hill halfway, so...
Yeah, so a detailed, um, uh, a detailed map does not have to be offered to the board, but the development potential has to be addressed by the applicant, because it's a contiguous property and it's owned by the same developer.
Okay, yep.
So that's what segmentation is, is to avoid, um, yeah, duplicate seeker, you know, reviews that, for contiguous properties down the road.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we can, he, he has the right to keep it as one single property, he may want to just go there and enjoy it as it is. He may not have any...
That's correct.
Development, um, you know...
But the board has to consider just the development potential, that's all it has to be.
We can suggest that we think he should, you know, loop it into the subdivision and combine it with that lot one, but, but I don't think we have any right to say that it has to happen.
That's correct.
So, um, you know, but, you know, we're considering it now as part of the seeker, and the, recognizing that it really doesn't have much of a development potential, based on all the environmental constrai, uh, constraints there, so I think that should just be noted
Well, it's going to be part of the, uh, it'll be part of the public hearing.
Yeah.
Because we're not there yet.
So it has to be added to the seeker?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, there's...
By code.
Because you're establishing a lot.
Right.
All right, so... I think, and I, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I, I think it's a good suggestion to say, it, it would be a good idea to loop that one in, and I, you should bring that back to your client and see what he thinks, but other than that, when you prepare your seeker, you need to consider that extra lot.
There we go.
And then we can move on.
Okay. Anything else you want to discuss, Dan?
Does those bulks need to be considered? I guess that's what we're before.
Do you need a vote on that?
I don't think we need a vote on it.
We're just discussing.
Isn't it, the fact that he's declaring it as a conservation subdivision, and that we're approving it as a conservation subdivision?
But isn't this just a discussion?
Well, it's for sketch plan, we're not...
We're, we're in the discussion, right?
Yes, huh?
But he's trying to ascertain whether we need to take votes on waiving certain bulk regulations, because it's...
Reducing them.
Yeah, this is what...
Yeah, I think you have the flexibility as, and to allow it to be different because it's a conservation subdivision.
Right, that's correct.
So in comparison, you'd make notes on the plot?
Yeah, so, so he would put some notation under the, under his bulk table, saying, you know, at the November 2023 planning board meeting, the planning board agreed that a front yard setback of 50 foot was required for here, something to that effect. You know, I had those three where I showed what his minimums were for those three that were non-compliant, so...
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know, what officially sanctions it as a conservation subdivision? Does it have to say that in the title, or, you know, like, is it, like you say, is it just on the table that this is a conservation subdivision, therefore these regulations?
I was curious about the bulk requirements of it. So i, is there a certain amount of land that is required to be deemed open, percentage-wise?
Thirty-five percent, I believe is the number, yeah, so... Uh, we've mentioned that in here about showing the open space or the conservation or whatever, so...
It's 35% is the number.
Yeah, and, and that's going to be one of the, the next things we should talk about, because there's all these, uh, ownership of the open spaces included in the, in the code, and I didn't necessarily think it would make sense to have a separate parcel that was owned by a conglomerate owners. That's just me personally, I mean, I, I think it would make more sense to, to have a conservation line and just have it in there, shown on the filed map, and then with a deed restriction for each lot, saying you can't clear anything beyond this area. And I think that that meets with the intent of what the conservation subdivision is asking for, which is, you know, a certain amount of land to be conserved. So, you know, I, I wanted Mike to, to basically show us a conservation line, you know, probably try to include as much of the steep slopes as you possibly can in there, and obviously all the wetlands that are at the bottom.
Yeah, so this property, actually, the property that, you know, mine, something along this, this area here, and again, the final needs and that, would be everything there to the property, I think it would be well over 35%.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, too.
We would have a large easement on all three lots, and then, right, written into those deeds of those properties, or the identification of easement, that whatever language the town attorney and our attorney have reached for, that would probably be the easiest.
I agree with that approach. It's, it seems like the simplest and probably the most plausible for homeownership, rather than having a separate parcel, you know, that's the easement, and then who's watching?
They even spoke about homeowners association, it's a little bit ridiculous.
For, for five...
I see it done just en masse, like conservation easement, but then the homeowner seems to get the maps half the time, so if it's actually written into the deed, very aware, definitely by the map, of that sort of deed, this is what it's written under property, so...
Right, but it will be on the map.
Yeah, both, that's, that's what I've been wanting.
Yeah, and then in their deed, yep.
And I just have a fire question for, for Peter. So we have our operating turnaround areas, that apparatus operating areas, maybe you have them here now, these lots here are through about the edge of the road.
Yeah, you're within fifty, fifty feet, Mike.
Would it make sense that you wouldn't need that, that you just park along the road and fight a fire from the road?
We pro...
For which one, which lots and stuff?
He's talking about the, the two, ones that are right on the road.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's what the FAB we spoke about. They're about 50 feet off the road of those, those two lots.
Mike, it'd be a case of putting your equipment in and backing your equipment out. No worries, it's a driveway.
They just, on water ones, they have to, have to get to the fire, so that's the reason why you have larger areas to maneuver, but these two lots, or whatever requirements, so probably...
That's why they're shown as all rectangles.
Yeah.
Well, the majority of equipment would, the majority of equipment would be on, on the road, uh, probably, I would just say as long as the, uh, driveway meets driveway requirements, which is going to be width and clearance, um, you know, so, side, uh, overhead clearance, I'm sorry, um, I think it'd be all right. Am I answering your question?
Yeah. Yeah, beside that, the, there's notation on there that during the plot plan, so whatever they actually end up deciding to do for a plot plan for each one of those lots, they're going to have to show the apparatus operating area, and after you'd be able to have a chance to take a look at it then, so... We just wanted to make sure it was realistic and for some of the larger lots there to, you know, go once per longer driveways and everything. So we normally ask for it to be shown graphically, but then, in this case, you know, FAB will have a chance to look at it, and somebody knows what house and exactly where the driveway's going. I think lots one and two, the, uh, the profiles are just a little something going on there. I think if you, I think we might improve you to run the driveways from the low side.
Okay, so you can get up on here?
Yeah. And your garage floor would be on the low side there.
Yeah, you were saying, water.
And then, yeah, because two of those profiles have the, uh, you know, that shows kind of the drainage would be heading down towards the garage, and then you'd have to make extra better, you know, provisions for drainage, and, you know, and it didn't look like it would really affect any other item you have on there, other than maybe just moving a septic tank a little bit on that one lot.
Okay.
But you might actually find that the driveways might be a little more flat that way, too, instead of that 10% section in the middle.
Yeah, that makes sense with the weather breaks.
Yeah, I think...
So, you know, I, most of the rest of stuff is kind of technically, I have a concern with getting it in the next submission, I, the only, I guess I would ask that the time is allowed in terms of 30 days, so, um, the board can go ahead and start themselves, yeah, that would be good, give us, give us some time to just clean up, I'm not going to ask for a public hearing, and, uh...
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Very painful.
All right.
Yeah, so, the only, the only response I believe we received was from the Duchess County Department of Behavioral Community Health, and they did not object to...
Right.
Planning board acting as lead agent, and they just noted that their permit required from being...
Right, great.
I'll make a motion to declare us as lead agent.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. That's a wrap, right? Okay, thank you, Mike. Yep. The motion to close the meeting?
I'll make, so move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right.